East and West in the Light Industrial L1 designations and to the South, the C3 commercial designation. Surrounding uses, there's single-family residential uses to the north. You've got commercial businesses and enterprises both to the east and west, as well as an RV park and the optimum location to the south. This particular exhibit just gives a preliminary layout of the utilities and the physical characteristics of the site. The site is vacant and fallow at this time. Site photos looking north from Airway. And looking southwest and western from Western Avenue. The conceptual site plan that's before you this evening is just that, it is a conceptual site plan. It's to allow for the three buildings totaling thirty-three, or thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-four square feet in area. Does consist of a large warehouse and distribution center, two mini storage buildings. The site as designed does accommodate for onsite parking, drive aisles, as well as retention. And a conceptual floor plan was also provided and is part of your packets this evening. And again, this is just the conceptual design and layout. As well as conceptual floor plans. In general, the CUP is required to go through a public hearing process, that is the purpose of the meeting this evening. It is required to demonstrate that it meets the findings that are contained in the staff reports before you, as well as the conditions of approval that are also contained in your staff reports. In general, the use is consistent with the Light Industrial L1 designation with respect to the warehousing and distribution and allowing for the ancillary retail sales with the approval of the CUP. Overall, the site is not anticipated to create any type of nuisance or significant traffic to be generated from the site. There are many findings that are required for the conditional use permit, and that is the fact that the site is generally in compliance with the city's municipal code and the zoning code as it stated. It's able to demonstrate that it meets the minimum parking requirements for the site, as well as having sufficient area for landscaping, perimeter setbacks, and open space, which in this particular case contains the retention waters. There was citizen review process for this particular project site. That was on August 28th, as well as again on September 7th. These were held by neighborhood meetings at their current location on 2389 Airway Avenue. Nobody attended the meetings that evening, on either of those two evenings. It was publicly noticed as part of our requirements on the city's behalf. That particular, the site was posted on 9/19, or I'm sorry, 9/23, and was posted in the minor on 9/18. No comments have been received to date. In general, engineering departments provided comments, which are a part of the staff report, as well as the fire department. We've received no comments specifically from our building official, no objection from frontier communications or any of the outside agencies. Staff does recommend that the planning commission approve conditional use permit tonight to allow for the ancillary retail sales of appliances in conjunction with permitted warehousing, distribution, and repair enterprise on the 2.73 acre, thereby affirming the findings and conditions of approval as stated in the staff report. I am not Amy, I will clarify that, so, but on behalf of her, I will take any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? No? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, I'm going to open this up to public comment. If any of you guys have a comment on this conditional use permit, please come up and approach the podium and... Got three minutes. Okay, I see none. I will close public comment and we will open up commission discussion. Do we have any discussion on this, or do you guys want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, I have a feeling that most of you guys are here for 3C. If that is actually the case, let me just jump to there and give you a quick heads up. So, this is Jed Noble. And he has to review himself, which means he can't sit for 3C, because he is the engineer on the project. So, we are actually not going to be able to have a vote on that issue tonight. So, if you guys want to go, I want to free you up so that you can go. If you would like to stay and ask any questions afterwards, that is okay too. But, we actually can't go over that issue tonight, because we only have three people who can vote.
Yeah, if you guys want to stick around and we can, I can try to answer any of your questions afterwards, that'd be fine. Waste of time for all of us, yes.
Correct. So, if you guys want to go, feel free. If you want to stay, feel free. But, I'm gonna go to 3B and we're gonna have to scratch 3C.
Chairperson Goss, if we can go ahead and make a motion to continue this item to a date certain, which would be November 13th?
November 13th?
Yes.
Alright, can I get a motion to continue talking about 3C on November 13th? That would be great.
I move that we continue talking about 3C on, sorry, it was...
November 13th.
November 13th.
I second that motion.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That, that's, so, if it was approved at this meeting, the next hearing would be at the city council meeting, so... It'll be after the P&amp;Z, whatever city council meeting, after the next P&amp;Z meeting is in November.
Correct. Correct, because this item is being moved to the November 13th. The October 15th meeting will be moved actually to November 19th.
Okay.
Yep. That is correct. That was if tonight, the motions were made and these items move forward, it would have been on the very next council meeting, which would have been October 15th. So, because this item's not being heard this evening, it will be continued to the November 13th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, November 19th City Council meeting. We will get the signs updated.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. Like I said, feel free to stay around if you want to talk to Jed, otherwise, go home. Yep. Okay, I'm gonna move us along to the next new business, that is 3B. If you guys, if you guys are gonna chat though, you need to just step outside, okay? Thanks. Okay, so 3B is the Zoning Ordinance Amendment Case ZO24-0002. This is the staff-initiated application in accordance with Section 2-50 of the City of Kingman zoning code to amend the city's zoning code originally adopted on April 6th of 2021. The subject amendment facilitates a comprehensive cleanup to Titles 1-5 addressing scrivener's errors while further clarifying and defining procedures and authority as prescribed in Section 1-30 Authority. Section 2-30 Common Procedures, Section 2-40 Permits and Approvals, while expanding and clarifying allowable uses and development standards affecting Section 3.2 through 3.40, allowable land uses and developmental standards, and Section 5-20 Definitions. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Chairperson Goss, commissioners. I hate to do this to you, but you're gonna have to read it all over again. We are asking that you go ahead and open the public hearing and continue it to the November 13th meeting as well. We were working on some late-minute changes this last week, and instead of rushing it, we wanted to take one more look at it before we brought it back for you. This is a comprehensive update to the code that we have in place today. It spans many, many sections, and so to make sure that we brought back forth before you the most updated and thorough copy we could, we needed to take just one more stab at it. So, we are asking that you open the public hearing and continue it.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Alright, we will reopen the public hearing and we are going to, I'm just gonna reread 3B, and then we need a motion to move it to the next date, which is November 13th. Okay, ready, go. 3B, Zoning Ordinance Amendment Case Z024-002. Staff-initiated application in accordance with Section 2-50 of the City of Kingman zoning code to amend the city's zoning code originally adopted on April 6th, 2021. The subject amendment facilitates a comprehensive cleanup of Titles 1 through 5 addressing scrivener's errors while further clarifying and defining procedures and authority as prescribed in Section 1-30 Authority, Section 2-30 Common Procedures, and Section 2-40 Permits and Approvals, while expanding and clarifying knowledgeable uses and development standards affecting Section 3-20 through 3-40 allowable land uses and development standards, and Sections 5.20 Definitions. Do I have a motion to move it to November 13th?
Chairperson Goss? Open the public hearing first?
We did!
Oh, okay, I missed it, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the zoning ordinance amendment case ZO24-002 to the November 13th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Now we have 3D. This, should I read 3D? Alright. We have 3D, which is a subdivision exemption extension of time Shangri-La Estates 4, tract 6046, SB 24-0005. A request from Michael Avitab, on behalf of C Ed Schultz Development Company for two petitions of exemption from subdivision ordinance section 2.28 B3 and 4 to allow for the extension of time to complete the final phase of Shangri-La Estates 4, tract 6046. The subdivision can be generally described as being located south of Gordon Drive, northwest of Sunshine Drive, and is having significant portions located along Easy Street, Jewel Street, and Diamond Drive. If granted, the preliminary plat in excess of the one-time, two-year extension and to allow the retroactive gaining of the extension of time from the September expiration date in Resolution 5439, the requested exemptions, if granted, would require a minor modification of Resolution Number 5075. And it looks like we have a report from Rosa. Sorry, there's some technical difficulties. Oh. Oh, there we go. There.
Thank you, chairperson. Good afternoon. What you have before you is subdivision case SB 24-0005. It's a petition of exemption to allow for an extension of time. The applicant and owner is Michael Avitabo on behalf of Ed Schultz Development Corporation. The requested action is to request a petition of exception from Section 2.28 B3 and 4 to allow for an extension of time to complete the final phase of Shangri-La Estates 4, tract 6046. This is the subject site. This is an arrow view of the subject site. These are some findings of fact of the general area. I'm gonna briefly go over these as, this information maybe you've encountered before. The size of the parcel for the subdivision is approximately 34.8 acres, located south of Gordon, north of Kino, east of Perry. It's zone R16, and includes the three mentioned parcels that you see before your screen. Has a slight slope, it's not in a flood plain, it's zone X. The general plan indicates that density is medium-density residential. There's existing public utilities, as you saw in one of the images before you earlier, and it can be accessed from Gordon, then Kino, and from north Diamond and Jewel. I won't go too much into the early history, but it was previous, this subdivision previously was Shangri-La Estates 3. It was then, it then expired, and there was a new request under Shangri-La Estates 4 preliminary plat. That one was approved in September 15, 2020. And that one, my apologies, was approved in April 4, 2017. There was an extension of time that was approved in September 15, 2020, which was, which then expired on September 15, 2022. There, in 2018, the final subdivision plat and improvement plans for Shangri-La Estates 4 were approved. The final subdivision plat and improvement plans were approved under Resolution 5188. And the final plat for Part B was recorded on January 3, 2024. The previous was for Part A. There was a second 24-month extension of time approved. There was a second twenty-four month extension of time approved in, under, on September fifteen, 2022, with the, with the approval ending on September fifteen, 2024. The final subdivision plat and improvement plans for part B of this subdivision were approved on September sixth, 2022, and the final, the final plat for part B of this subdivision was recorded on June twenty-fifth, 2024. The applicant submitted an extension of time application, along with payment on August twenty-one, 2024, so prior to the extension expiring. Public notification and comments, a public notice was placed in daily minor on 9/18/2024. The site was posted on nine twenty-four, twenty, 2024. We haven't received no public comments as of this date. There were no objections from sanitation, from city sanitation or frontier communications. There was some comments regarding technical revisions to the submitted final plat from the catastrophe mapping division from the county. This here has phase A, B, and C here noted as phase one, two, and three. As you can see, if they were to have this extension approved, they'd be working on phase three there. That's phase three again. These are the specific exemptions the applicant is requesting from the subdivision ordinance. The original extension is for only two years. This would be well beyond that timeframe, and the other exception speaks of a similar twenty-four month timeframe. So, these are the required findings for an exception to the subdivision ordinance. They have met the criteria that these, the granting of these exceptions will not be detrimental to public safety, health, or injuries to their property. They have met the condition that the request is unique to the property for the, for which the exception is sought to not applicable generally to their property. This one is, the applicant has already begun and finished part A and B, and they have not, they have already had an, an extension past the two years that is allowed. They, in the records, there was no expectation communicated for them that they would not be able to review, renew after two years. So, that's a specific, that's something specific to this subdivision. I haven't seen it with other subdivisions, so, the finding C, it, that because of the particular physical surrounding shapes, shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from mere inconvenience of the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. So, there aren't any particular physical surrounding features, shapes, or topographical conditions natural to the site, however, the strict application would result in a hardship to existing part A and B of this subdivision. The lot and block numbers may misalign if this were, if this needed to be replatted. Access to existing or proposed parts of the subdivision may be limited if the strict regulations were applied. The applicant has also noted that hardship could be caused if the current offsite and because the current improvements, the future improvements are dependent upon the improvements from A and B. The last criteria for the required findings is that the granting of the exception will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, general plan, or official map, and that criteria has been met. Staff recommends, based on the requests and analysis contained in this report, approval of the requested exemptions to grant an extension of time to Shangri-La Estates four tract sixty forty, forty-six with all previously approved conditions and the following additional All previous conditions approved of the Shangri-La Estates four tract sixty forty-six preliminary plat and extension of time request must be addressed with the submission of the final plat.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Do we have any questions for Rosa? No?
Rosa, I believe when I read through the packet, the, the applicant or the submitter, they, they mentioned that they had trouble with COVID, and that caused some inconvenience, mainly the supply chain issues. So, you said you haven't heard that from other developers? Is that what you said there?
I will clarify, this specific subdivision has already been granted an extension past the two years that is allowed. At no point were they counseled that that would be the maximum they, that they would be allowed, so this would be their third extension. They've, it does seem from the history though, they've been diligently working towards finalizing this subdivision. They did note some delays because of COVID. Does that clarify?
Yeah, it just sounded like earlier you said that, that you haven't seen a similar trend in other developers, basically.
So, the, the trend is I haven't seen extension of, I haven't seen yet extensions of time being extended beyond the two years, and maybe I haven't seen enough, but without the council, that you will no longer be able to extend it. We can also, if, if staff, I'm sorry, if the commission would like add a stipulation that this would be their last and final extension of time, and I've spoken with the applicant, they would be okay with that as well.
Commissioner Waters, commission. With respect to just the extensions of time, historically, as there's been downturns in markets, we, we've granted additional extensions beyond what's allowed in the subdivision ordinance. We would typically take that back to a city council or be a separate resolution, so you may not see it on a case-by-case basis, because it's actually spread on a broader scale. I will also just inform as part of one of the amendments that is forthcoming, in that cleanup of the Zontex amendment, will address also extensions as well, to grant them longer periods of time, as well as allow them to be addressed at a staff level, so they don't all have to come back before the commission or the council, so that way we can bring projects back to, to being developed in a quicker manner, so, eliminating some of those red blocks.
All right. Thank you, that helps me understand it, I appreciate it.
I have a question. If we do approve the extension, how long is it going to be for?
Two years.
Okay. And all the previous ones were?
Two years.
Two years.
Any further questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anybody here has a public comment on this agenda item, please come forward and address the commission.
My name's Randy Perry. I do Michael, I do work for Michael Abantavli, okay, at Shangri-La, I do plumbing and all that. And about the COVID issues, it's a, it was a fact, it held, it did hold up a lot of people. That's one thing I wanted to say, it did hold up. I was scrambling to get materials, I was ordering materials from New Jersey, because I couldn't get it locally, okay? And he doesn't have an option to do some of that stuff like that, but like you said, yeah, it's just, that was a problem during COVID.
Yeah, I couldn't get hardy plank for my house.
Okay, so, you understand that, you know, but it was a problem, but his, his name is Abantavli.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody else have a comment for us? No? All right, I'm going to close public comment and open up commission discussion.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't grant another two-year extension.
I agree.
All right, are we ready for motion then?
I think so.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension of time for the Shangri-La Estates number four tract six zero four six SB twenty-four dash zero 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 five. Oh, with the additional condition, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Motion approved. Thank you. All right. Last, we have announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff, no discussion on any of these items.
There is, the city's holding another community development workshop on the 21st, so just to make you guys aware, in case you want to attend.
I would like to report that I attended the Arizona Planners Association meeting in, in Tucson several weeks ago. I, Strolling suggests the other, the other commissioners here attended. It was, it was great, there was a huge gulf in perspective from different, like Tucson, you know, just the, to see how planners, like the narratives they have, just completely different, the mindsets in some areas, and then you have developers up there speaking, you just see all different perspectives. It really was valuable.
I agree. All right, then, does anybody have any requests for future agenda items? No? All right, then, I will adjourn us.